...of the applicable resolution. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview. Let's star dot com, youtube dot com forward slash mountain view gov and on Comcast channel 26. Noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountain view dot gov forward slash meeting to enter the zoom meeting or by phone by dialing six six nine zero nine one two eight and entering webinar ID eight four three five one two six seven one four two. Any emails received by four thirty PM today were received directly by the City Council. City Attorney Loeb will make a closed session announcement and then the City Council welcomes public comment on the item listed for closed session.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. There is one item on the closed session agenda this evening. Item two point one is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code section five four nine five seven point six. The agency designated representatives are the City of Mountain View Assistant City Manager and Chief Operating Officer Audrey Seymour-Ramberg, the Human Resources Director Sue Rush, and Charles Sakai from the law firm of Sloan Sakai Young and Wolf LLP. The employee organizations are Service Employees International Union or SEIU local five twenty one, the Eagles Association, the Police Officers Association or POA, the International Association of Firefighters or IAFF local nineteen sixty five, unrepresented fire managers, unrepresented police managers, unrepresented department heads, and unrepresented confidential employees. And that concludes a closed session announcement for this evening.
Thank you very much, and we will give you a proper welcome later on in the meeting. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the closed session items listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Timer will be displayed on the screen. Being know members of the public wishing to speak, we will now recess to closed session and return to this webinar at six thirty PM for the regular session. See you then.[160.01]
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the City Council of April 26, 2022. I will now read the usual announcement as required. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with California Government Code Section 54953E as authorized by a resolution of the City Council. Please contact city.clerk@mountainview.gov to obtain a copy of the applicable resolution. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.letstar.com, youtube.com/mountainviewgov, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountainview.gov/meeting to enter the Zoom webinar or by phone by dialing 669-900-9128 and entering webinar ID 84351267142. All any emails received by 4:30 PM today were received directly by the City Council. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The City Clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abbe Koga?
Here.
Councilmember Lieber?
Here.
Councilmember Maticek?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Here.
Mayor Ramirez?
Here.
You have a quorum with Councilmember Comay.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Item 3, Presentation. Please note, these are presentations only. The City Council will not take any action. Public comment will occur after the presentation items. First is Item 3.1, Oath of Office for City Attorney Jennifer Logue. We will now view the swearing-in of our new City Attorney Jennifer Logue.
I state your name.
I, Jennifer Logue.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
City Attorney Logue, would you like to say a few words?
I just want to say that I am very excited to be here and, you know, I really appreciate the opportunity to serve this council and the citizens of Mountain View, and I'm looking forward to a long career with you.
We're very excited to welcome you aboard. Would any member of the council like to say a few words? Vice Mayor Hicks?
I'm going to say very few words, just welcome, and I'm just so sorry we couldn't do this in person. It was, it's entertaining to see you in a, in a room, all of you all alone, but I would much prefer to be, you know, to be all together, all of council staff, members of the public to welcome you, so I'm sorry about that and I look forward to it in the future.
Councilmember Abbe Koga?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to off, also offer my welcome and congratulations. I really appreciate and look forward to working with you, Ms. Logue. We've had a couple of events where we've been able to be together the last week and I can already tell, yeah, I feel like you've just been with us and already a part of our, our family, so I look forward to a, a long working relationship.
You, Councilmember Maticek?
Thanks. I also want to add my welcome, and I would agree with the comment that Councilmember Abbe Koga just said. It does seem like you've been here a long time, you just seamlessly fit, so it's great.
Councilmember Lieber?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to extend my formal welcome to our new City Attorney as well. We are so pleased to have you here and to join Mountain View, and we know that you're going to do a great job for our city. And a thanks go out to Janie Quinn for being our interim during this period and for our recruitment staff who really found us an extraordinary city attorney, so thanks to them and all the best of luck to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter?
I'd like to extend my thanks, too. We were very impressed by you throughout the whole interview process, and we were really pleased that you accepted our job, and we look forward to working with you for many years, so welcome.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just echo the council members' comments, and I believe that I even remarked to Jennifer, maybe it was today or yesterday, that I felt like I had been working with her for a long time. So, on behalf of the organization, I want to officially welcome you to Mountain View, and we're so happy that you're here, so welcome.
Thank you. And, City Attorney, my apologies, did I see you unmute yourself?
I was just going to say thank you to everyone, but then I saw other hands going up, so I, I muted to let everyone finish. I just wanted to say thank you for the kind comments and the welcome.
Thank you very much for your service to our city. We will now move on to Item 3.2, Teen Week Proclamation. I think we will be joined momentarily by the recipient is Emily Chan. She is, she has joined us. We are happy to be joined this evening by Youth Advisory Committee Chair Emily Chan, who will accept this proclamation. Emily has been on YAC for three years, and this is her first year as chair. Emily has enjoyed planning Teen Week and might perform at open mic next week. I would like to thank Emily for all the hard work she's done for the YAC the last three years and wish her well as she moves to Boston to attend Harvard in the fall. Wow, congratulations. The proclamation reads, "Whereas, youth and teens account for 19.6% of the Mountain View population, and whereas teens who perceive that adults in the community value youth are more likely to grow up healthy, exhibit leadership, value diversity, and succeed in school; and whereas teens represent a vast and often untapped resource for immediate and long-term community development efforts and change; and whereas teens in Mountain View use their assets in productive ways to make positive contributions, initiate action, and make a difference in our community; and whereas teens from student-based organizations and committees have made a direct impact in Mountain View by leading initiatives on suicide prevention, environmental awareness, and diversity; and whereas parents, teachers, and community members can support teens by encourage, encouraging them to share their voice, provide them with meaningful opportunities, and consistently role-model positive behavior; and whereas the Youth Advisory Committee has developed an annual week of celebration, Teen Week, to showcase teens in our community, including their creativity, intelligence, activism, mental wellness, and the value they provide. Now, therefore, I, Lucas Ramirez, Mayor of the City of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2 to May 6, 2022, as Teen Week." Yay. Emily, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited and so grateful to accept this proclamation on behalf of the YAC, and Teen Week is really a special time for youth to really support each other and be creative and even find new interests, and so it really means a lot that the council has always been supporting us in this way. And so our YAC members have worked really hard over the past couple months to plan these events and showcases that I think, or I know are going to be super meaningful and engaging for Mountain View teens, so thank you again for the proclamation and for having me.
Of course, our pleasure. Would any member of the council like to say a few words? Councilmember Abbe Koga?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say congratulations and thank you, thank you for the proclamation and for designating this, the week, the Teen Week. I've had the pleasure of being on the Youth Services Committee of the council for my, again, my entire time, and really enjoy working with YAC. I was a Youth Advisory Commissioner in San Mateo when I was in high school, so it's been very important to me to, to nurture our future leaders, and so I just want to thank our YAC for all their hard work. I'm just always really impressed by their energy, their smart, their smarts, their enthusiasm, and, you know, the, the activity that has, their amount of activity that has grown over the years, and, and then just a special congratulations to you, Emily, as a alum of your, your college. I'm really excited that, for your future, and wish you all the best.
Thank you. Any other members of, of the council? If not, thank you again for joining us, Emily, and congratulations and best of luck in your career as a Harvard student. We hope you come back. We will now, thank you very much. We will now take public comment for the presentation items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the presentation items listed on the agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen, and we'll go ahead and allocate three minutes. The first speaker is Alex Brown.
Hey, congratulations, Emily. Jennifer, welcome to the city. I look forward to working with you as an overly active community member. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members of the public, we will proceed to Item 4, Consent Calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Vice Mayor Hicks?
I do not want to pull an item, but I do want to mention two of the items, so when would you like me to do that? Right now or a little bit later?
Let's do that right before we approve the motion. If, if items are pulled, we'll take quick comments and then we'll motion to approve the ballot, if that's okay.
Okay. I will wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maticek?
Thank you. I just want to register a no vote on Item 4.2. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Like Vice Mayor Hicks, I just wanted to make a few comments. Should she go first?
We'll take public comment, and then we'll come back, and you can provide quick comments before we approve the motion, if that's okay. Very good. So no items have been pulled. We will now move on to public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on any item on the consent calendar? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on the phone. A timer will, will be displayed on the screen. Let's go ahead and allocate two minutes. The first speaker is Albert Jeans.
Hi, this is Albert Jeans. I just want to comment on 4.8, which is the recology building retrofit. And I sent my comments in, but I'd just like to reiterate what I said there. I'm not against retrofitting, I'm just saying, if there's any chance this city parcel could become a park, let's do the study first before we do the retrofit, so we don't tear down a perfectly good building in a couple of years. And just want to point out that with just the three projects that are in, in construction right now in the Sterling Plan area, 2,000 more people will be coming to this area, you know, in a few years. That's just, those are projects already under construction, not even, you know, being planned. And so we really need park spaces, we only have about 0.4 acres of city parkland per 1,000 residents in this plan area. So I really hope that's a sincere effort we made to see if this site is suitable for a park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alex Brown.
Oh, long time. Hey, I just wanted to thank you. Oh, hey. I thought I unmuted. All right. Long time. I'd like to thank you again for bringing the TRIO back into alignment and including mobile home residents. My neighbors are all frequently concerned about displacement, and this is just a, a good step to trying to really alleviate that concern, so thanks. 4.3, by the way.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, we'll return to the council for deliberation, and I will note that a motion to approve the consent calendar should also include reading the title of the ordinances attached to Items 4.2 and 4.3, and the resolution attached to 4.4, and those are listed in the agenda flow, and I'll, I'll also request that the maker of the motion note the no vote registered by Councilmember Maticek for Item 4.2. So I think there were a couple of members of the council who wanted to provide high-level remarks, and then we'll take the motion. Vice Mayor Hicks? You're, you're still on mute.
Thank you. I wanted to comment on items, oh gosh, let me find them. It was two items regarding, okay, 4.5 and 4.6, 4.5 being Miramonte Avenue improvements, and 4.6 being intersection traffic signal and replacement and upgrades on Shoreline, Latham, and Church Street. I just, there's been a lot of concern in the community recently about the bike fatality on Grant and El Camino, and I've gotten a lot of questions from, from members of the public, I'm sure other council members have as well, on what we're doing regarding bicycle and sometimes pedestrian safety as well, and I just, I know that not everybody who comes to these meetings reads all the items on the consent calendar, and I wanted to let people know that there were, that there are improvements for bike safety in both of these items, and that there will be, we will also be visiting that issue on multiple other occasions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw?
Yeah, even though the items on the consent calendar aren't necessarily controversial, they do represent a tremendous amount of work on the, particularly on the part of our staff. So I, I wanted to just, just bring that to people's attention, particularly on, on this list. In particular, we, we see a lot from public works and, and from finance, and so I wanted to thank those staffs for, for their efforts, and also echo what Vice Mayor Hicks said about the bicycle infrastructure. I was particularly pleased to see on the Miramonte project, which is 4.5, that in addition to resurfacing the road after it's been dug up this summer for some water main improvements, they are, they're going to include an extra bike lane at the corner of Miramonte and Castro, right next to Graham School, and that's a place where, so there'll be a double bike lane on that right side, so that kids can go either direction without having to cross Miramonte. That's going to improve the safety there a great deal, so I was really pleased to see that that, that had been added. And so that's my comment. Would you like me, should I make a motion? Is this time?
Please do.
Okay, move this stuff. I will move the, I've got to move my cursor up a little bit. The consent calendar. Now, for number 4.2, Adopt an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mountain View, Amending Chapter 2, Article 12 of the Mountain View City Code, relating to campaign finance and repealing Article 3 of Chapter 3 of the Mountain View City Code, relating to political signs to be read and further title only, further reading waived. 4.3, Adopt an Ordinance of the City of Mountain View, Amending Article 13 of Chapter 36 of the Mountain View City Code, related to tenant relocation assistance, to provide tenant relocation assistance benefits, and a first right to return to mobile home tenants who rent a mobile home in a Mountain View mobile home park, and finding the ordinance to be exempt from California Environmental Quality Act. and finding the ordinance to be exempt from California Environmental Quality Act under Sequel Guidelines, Section 15061B3, to be read and further title only, further reading waived. 4.4, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View, authorizing submittal of a financial assistance application to the United States Bureau of Reclamation for its Water Smart Title 14 Water Reclamation and Reuse Program to be read and title only, further reading waived. And I also would like to mention that councilmember Madachak would like to vote no on 4.2.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Hicks.
So I second that. I also wanted to comment that I share the members of the public's concern about parks in, in the Terabella area. But I think we, I think we can visit that over time, but that's what my vote signifies in favor. I think we do owe recology a sound building for now, but that doesn't mean that I'm overlooking the need for parks in that area.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not, I'll ask the city clerk to commence the roll call.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbe Koka?
Hi.
Councilmember Lieber?
Hi.
Councilmember Madachak?
Yes.
Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item five, oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. We'll go ahead and allocate three minutes. The first speaker is Tim McKenzie. Tim, are you able to unmute yourself? We cannot hear you.
Sorry about that. Computer froze up a little bit. Hi all, I'm Tim McKenzie, he/him pronouns, a member of the Montaloma neighborhood for six or seven years now. I've started, the time blends together in the pandemic. And actually, this is a rare opportunity or a situation where I'm somewhat coming in my professional capacity as a postdoctoral researcher in the genetics department at Stanford University. I'm not sure if you noticed, but a few weeks ago, there was an article in the Mountain View Voice about the Muehmo Alone tribe. And part of the article was about research coming out from Stanford in collaboration with tribal members that demonstrated genetic continuity between current members of the Muehmo Alone tribe and people at archaeological sites that have been in the area, bodies dating back a few thousand years, demonstrating that there is a continued inhabit, that the Muehmo Alone tribe has continually inhabited this land for a long time. The Alone tribe is currently seeking federal recognition as tribe status, which they do not have currently. There is a joint resolution at the state level that is sitting in committee. Both Mark Berman and Josh Becker are in support of it. But I, I would love to see the City of Mountain View pass a proclamation recognizing that we live on Muehmo Alone land and calling to, on the state legislature to move the bill forward. But ultimately, this decision lies with the Department of the Interior. So I would also like to see the city send information to the Department of Interior saying that we recognize the Muehmo Alone as the indigenous people of this land and that we want the federal government to recognize them. I would love to see that at the city level. I also encourage all council members, anyone who may be listening, to go to the Department of Interior website and contact us and say, I live in Mountain View and would like the federal government to recognize the Muehmo Alone tribe. I've done that, but I'm just one person and I would love to see this happen at the municipal level. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, we will proceed to item 6.1, Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 Annual Action Plan. Spanish translation services are available for this item. We will now hear from our inter-
Buenas noches a todos. Vamos a seguir con el artículo 6.1 de recomendaciones de financiamiento para el año fiscal 2022-23, Plan de Acción Anual. Esto será interpretado al español. Si es que ocupa interpretación, por favor seleccione el globo al interior de su pantalla que diga interpretación y seleccione español. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager Michaela Hellman-Tincher and Assistant Community Development Director Wayne Chen will present the item.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ramirez. This is Michaela Hellman-Tincher, Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. And I will share my screen. Can you see that all right?
Yes, we can.
Great. So this evening we'll be presenting recommendations for the fiscal year 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan for the use of federal CDBG and home funds. The purpose of this meeting is to receive input from the council and the public on the proposed annual action plan, to receive the council's approval of the annual action plan, and to allocate capital funds to the conversion of the Crestview Hotel into permanent housing. This is the second year in the two-year Public Services NOFA cycle. So all of the funding recommendations for public services grants were made last year. I also want to note that staff followed the same process as we did last year with regards to our capital funding recommendation. And we are proposing allocating the funds to a housing effort that will soon be underway and we'll get into that in a moment. The fiscal year 2022-23 Annual Action Plan has been shared per the city's citizen participation plan. This includes all the items listed here on this slide, including notices in the Mountain View Voice and Palo Alto Daily Post, emails to interested parties, including the nonprofit partners that we work with, postings at City Hall and the library and on our website in multiple languages, a presentation at the April 7 Human Relations Commission meeting, and then tonight's city council meeting. Just a reminder, this action plan is part of the five-year 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan. And it, we will reflect the goals that you all approved in that plan, which include increasing affordable housing, responding to homelessness, supporting social services, enhancing physical infrastructure, addressing and promoting fair housing, and promoting economic resiliency. Both the CDBG and home fund, home programs have specific limitations on how the funds can be used. For the CDBG program, a minimum of 65% of the funds must be used on capital projects. Up to 15% can be used on public services and up to 20% can be used on administration. Similarly, for home, a minimum of 90% must be used for capital projects and up to 10% on administration. This table shows the available funds we have to expend in this year's action plan. This first section at the top is our anticipated CDBG and home allocations. So for CDBG, we're anticipating receiving around $600,000 from the federal government. And for home, we're anticipating receiving around $270,000 from the federal government. There may be small changes in the final allocation and the action plan anticipates that and will adjust the funding proportionally to what's discussed here. And as you'll see, we're proposing expending the funds per the limitations of the fund, of each of the funds. The next section is what's called our unallocated funds. This includes program income we received this year that we didn't anticipate in last year's action plan, as well as funds that we had previously allocated on things like administration, but didn't spend. And then the last section is our estimated program income. This is where we estimate what we'll receive in the future year and will spend in the future year. And we're anticipating $100,000 each from the CDBG and home funds. And that amounts to about $1.7 million. This table shows the same funds, but described a little differently. And you can see that altogether, we're proposing spending $147,000 on administrative costs, $90,000 on public services, and approximately $1.5 million on capital projects. As I mentioned earlier, this is the second year in the two-year Public Services Grant Cycle. This table shows the allocation amounts determined last year. And the yellow column here shows what will be granted this year. You'll note that of the, between the two years, a larger portion of funds were granted last year, both to allow nonprofits to meet the significant need that they were facing during the pandemic and also to expend significant funds that the city had available that year. In order to give grantees maximum flexibility, they are allowed to use the funds designated last year in this upcoming year. So this 90,000 is not all that they will have available this year. Last year, staff evaluated the needs for capital funds and decided not to undergo a NOFA process and instead designate the funds to an immediate need that met the consolidated plan goals, which was the conversion of the Crestview Hotel into permanent housing. Since you all allocated that $3.7 million, a lot has happened. The city has hosted several community meetings in partnership with the county. The county has designated $7 million to the project. The county, in partnership with the city, submitted a state home key application, which we anticipate hearing back about quite soon. And the city and state, city and county also worked on a developer selection process, which is just wrapping up. Through all of this process, we've refined the plan for how the site can best be used. And it's helped us to better understand likely costs. One of the costs that we are anticipating is the cost of converting a portion of the units into multi-bedroom family units. The rest will remain studio units. Because of all this, it's clear that more funds are needed for the project. And therefore, staff recommends allocating approximately 1.5 million in this year's plan to the project. I'll close here with the staff recommendations. They're a bit lengthy, but just to summarize, the first is to approve the annual action plan. The second is to allocate approximately $1.5 million to the acquisition and rehabilitation of the Crestview Hotel to permanent housing. The third is to allow for us to adjust the grant amounts if our final allocation is different than what we are anticipating. And the fourth is a sequo exemption. Thanks very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. If any member of the council have questions, councilmember Abbe Koka.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I just had one question regarding the Crestview project. I was at a cities association meeting and Palo Alto council member had mentioned that they, they also applied for a project, but the state funding was, I guess, expended. So I was just wondering if you know more, if, that the fund has been replenished and we still have opportunity or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember. The initial Bay Area allocation was expended very, very early on in the home key grant process. But some of the other buckets of funds were, are still available. And also there have been reallocations from other regions. So we're quite hopeful that these funds will be forthcoming.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? If not, we'll go to the public. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. Let's go ahead and allocate two minutes. Tim McKenzie.
Just want to express my support for the Crestview project. It was great seeing it start to come together and seeing it move through. And I just want to thank everyone who's put the work in on it and looking forward to seeing it move forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kevin Ma.
Evening, council. My name is Kevin Ma. On behalf of Mountain View YIMBY, we are in support of the Crestview project and therefore support staff's recommended allocations of CDBG and home funds to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, I will now bring the item back for council deliberation and action. A motion is in order. Councilmember Abbe Koka.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any other hands, although I just saw Vice Mayor raise hers. I was going to go ahead and make the motion, if that's okay, Vice Mayor. Okay. Let me pull up what we have to read here.
Well, so in this case, I don't think there's a, is there a resolution?
Oh.
Just make the staff.
Is it just staff? Oh, great. I was looking up our agenda flow, but you're right. So I will move staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
I second that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Yes, I'm definitely in support of this, but I just wanted to comment that there's a lot of interest in the nonprofits that we support. And I was really pleased to see that you included that table in the, in the presentation because I know the support that we give those nonprofits is, you know, is really important to them. I mean, it doesn't keep them running by themselves by any stretch of the imagination, but it does help a lot. So thank you for including that. And, you know, we, that's, that's, we have a longstanding tradition of doing that. And then the other, the other nonprofit I wanted to mention was CHACK. CHACK has been an organization we've supported for many years. And sometimes it's been in this process, but it's not in this process anymore. It gets a special allocation and that will come up in the budget. So I just wanted anybody who was listening, who was worried about whether we'd forgotten them, no, we have not, to say that. And, and also, I, you know, the Crestview Hotel is such an interesting project in that it's on the, you know, it's on the city boundary and we're doing it in collaboration. And it's been really fascinating to see how it evolves. And so thank you for, thank staff for, for all the work to, to get us to this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give my thanks and compliments to staff as well, in particular on the Crestview project and moving incredibly rapidly and in a, in a very good way. And I think that this is going to be a really meaningful, important addition to our community and, and serve people very, very well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will ask the city clerk to begin the roll call.
Councilmember Abbe Koka?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Hi.
Councilmember Madachak?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes.
Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Michaela and Wayne, for, for the presentation. We'll now move on to item 6.2, ordinance approving a military equipment funding acquisition and use policy. Assistant City Attorney Megan Maravich and Police Chief Chris Shung will present the item. Please begin when you're ready.
Good evening. I'm going to share my screen now. Can you see the slides?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Megan Maravich, Assistant City Attorney, and Police Chief Shung will be joining me later in the slides. First this evening, I'll provide background and information regarding Assembly-
First this evening, I'll provide background and information regarding Assembly Bill 481. Then we'll present to you the Mountain View Police Department's Draft Policy 709 on Military Equipment Funding Acquisition and Use. The complete draft policy is Attachment 2 to the council report. To provide background and, and context to AB 481, in September of 2021, the state legislature passed and Governor Newsom approved eight law enforcement reform bills. These bills included the expansion of public access to law enforcement records, restricting the use of law enforcement equipment during protests, among others. AB 481 was adopted to increase transparency into the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment by local law enforcement agencies. The bills also make cities and police agencies accountable for the equipment they have, requiring reporting on its use and compliance with standards and policies surrounding its use. AB 481 also requires the adoption of procedures by which members of the public can register complaints or concerns regarding the uses of military equipment. And it also incorporates a community engagement component and opportunity for public input. Specifically, AB 481 requires the city council to approve a military equipment policy in order for the police department to continue use of existing equipment. If the policy is approved, the police department will publish an annual report documenting equipment usage, reporting on compliance with the policy, and including community feedback received throughout the year. Following publication of the annual report, the police department will host a community engagement meeting to allow the general public to ask questions and engage in discussion regarding the military equipment policy and the annual report. The first community engagement meeting will take place in April or May of next year. The policy will then be presented to city council annually for renewal, taking into consideration the review of the annual report. AB 481 defines 15 different categories of military equipment. These categories range from remote, from drones to other types of firearms. And they continue on to the next slide. A complete list of the categories is described in the council report. Now I'll turn over the next couple of slides to Chief Shung for his presentation.
Thank you, member. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I just wanted to provide a little context on the type of equipment that we have. And I think while it's important to note that the list that you see can be confusing, and I'm happy to answer any questions on what specifically they use. The term militarization describes what it is, but I think it's also important to call out, more importantly, how and why we use the equipment, which I think oftentimes can get confusing. For example, the drones and the RV that we have that qualify for the list on the militarized equipment are actually available to anybody off the shelf as well. So that's just one example. No single piece of equipment that we have in the police department is perfect for any situation. So the, the tact that we use is, like any specialized piece of equipment, we want to be prepared for sometimes the worst-case scenario to keep our community safe. In general, you'll, you'll kind of get a sense of the theme of the more specialized equipment that we have, the higher degree of training, the fewer number of Mountain View PD personnel are able to be qualified to use it, and the higher degree of leadership authority or command authority that's required to even deploy it or use it. We are, are kind of keep our ears to the ground on a lot of the different incidents happening around the country and even in our region. And I think we're all familiar with the Gilroy Gardens shooting, the VTA rail guard shooting, as well as active shooters that unfortunately are kind of the norm again around the country. So we pay particular attention to the types of weapons that the suspects are using in these cases and oftentimes serve as the tabletop exercises for us in terms of always being the most prepared we can to keep our Mountain View community safe. In general, as you, as you mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, when we use some of this highly specific equipment, there's a huge kind of chain of command component that requires up to and including my authority to, to deploy that type of equipment. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, we don't have equipment in every single category that you saw that's listed in the staff report, but we do have general ones that, that qualify. So in, in our, our inventory specifically, we do have drones and a robot. And as I mentioned before, the drones that we fly are actually commercially available. And council adopted a drone use policy back in 2019. The command and control vehicle you may have seen around our special events like Art and Wine Festival, it's basically a, a large black and white painted RV that gives us a mobile office to work special events like downtown events or at the Shoreline Amphitheater. We do have breaching equipment that's termed explosive breach. And I want to call out that generally what you see in here on, on like Netflix or TV or movies is not and quite very different than how we would use it. It's a very surgical, specific type of tool that's used in very, very, very fine definitions. And then the, the category eight, nine, and 10 that covers patrol rifles, sniper rifles. So our patrol rifles is one category which is deployed in every police car and motorcycle. They're locked up and they remain there. And the general usage there is, if you think of it this way, our handguns, our pistols are effective up to a certain range for close range in terms of defending life. But rifles are a lot more accurate. And the way we would use rifles differs greatly in terms of the way a military application might be. So that's also something I want to call out that distinguishes it. The last category is less lethal munitions. It's a category that covers either rubber batons, tear gas. And tear gas comes in many forms. Sometimes we will use it in terms of crowd control situations. Other times, it's a munition that can be shot into a room that disperses a small amount of tear gas to, in those situations, move a suspect from one room to another. Again, these are not pieces of equipment that a general patrol officer that you would see driving around would be carrying, with the exception of a patrol rifle. With that, I know it's a very broad sense, and I just wanted to provide kind of a general overview. One other question that we've received in the past is what happens if other entities on mutual aid come and help us out? Each entity in the state of California is doing the same thing on the same timeline. So our respective colleagues in other jurisdictions are also presenting to their councils. Because in a major event, we can expect multiple agencies for mutual aid coming. But even at that point, anything they bring with them would require the, the, basically the buy-off of Mountain View PD leadership to deploy and use for that incident. Allison, or Megan, back to you.
How does AB 481 affect the city of Mountain View? Well, if the city council adopts an ordinance approving the military equipment policy, Police Department's Policy 709, the Mountain View Police Department will be able to continue to use the equipment that is designated as military equipment and listed as in the inventory, which is Attachment 1 to the Policy 709. And staff will implement the requirements of 481 that we've described through the presentation, including tracking and documenting each use of these types of military equipment and presenting those in an annual report for review at a community engagement meeting, and then ultimately by city council each year. And if the, the council does not adopt a policy, the police department will have to cease use of its existing equipment. As a result, the department would have to redesign policies and procedures and operations for responding to critical incidences because these policies currently incorporate the use of this type of equipment. And ultimately, this could have a negative impact on the police department's ability to respond to critical incidences like those described by Chief Shung earlier in the presentation. Finally, I'll close with the recommendation, which is to introduce an ordinance which would amend, I'm sorry, add Section 2.69.3 to the Mountain View City Code. And set a second reading for adoption of the ordinance at the May 10 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Does any member of the council have questions? Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. I saw a response to categories 12 and 14, but not to category 13. So does that mean that we're, we don't currently have stock of category 13?
That's correct. Councilmember Lieber.
Okay. And then under categories 12 and 14, in the staff report, it talks about stopping a subject at various distances. And then in terms of other tools, creating a diversionary tactic when trying to take a dangerous suspect into custody. So would the options such as pepper balls and tear gas be used on subjects or suspects?
I think if the question is the definition, the difference between a subject and a suspect, use of any of these types of tools could only be used against someone we would consider a suspect, someone related to a crime or whatever incident that we're responding to.
Okay, so over the past couple of years, we've seen when there were political demonstrations and both, well, really all of these things, beanbags, pepper balls, tear gas, batons, et cetera, were used within our county. And I am just trying to see if in the policies that we're adopting, is there anything that distinguishes between political speech and, and when someone becomes a suspect in a crime? You, you mentioned using it for crowd control. So how, where are the parameters around that? And where would we find it in the written policy?
So the use in terms of crowd control situations, and there's nothing specific to the term political type of rallies or anything like that. In any sort of crowd control situation, if there, if it becomes a situation where crimes are being committed, windows are being broken, for instance, or there's fights or something, the incident command at that point would deem it a, basically a riot and give a riot proclamation. So at that point, and certain criminal elements have to be met at that point, elements of that. Once that takes place and a riot has been declared, and this is beyond just a normal rally or free speech. In fact, in most of the deployments that I'm thinking of in my head, it's never risen to that occasion. The, the primary role at that point for law enforcement is to maintain the safety of both the protesters and those observing and the, the property owners where that's taking place. Understanding some of the case studies that I've seen before, if a crowd becomes out of control and they're committing criminal activity, then that's when the riot designation comes out. Once that happens, and, and typically whoever gives that proclamation, gives it over and over and over, records it so that there's a record of it. Anyone who stays beyond that point could be considered in violation of the law. And that's when a decision to deploy chemical munitions may be used to move them away or disperse them out of that area.
And so will that end up being in the, in the written policy that it would need to be triggered by a formal determination that it's, it's not a, it's going beyond the free speech?
No, that would be actually covered in our use of force and our SWAT policy and procedures manual. So those types of steps have already been outlined in a separate. This one is specific more to inventory and reporting out to council.
Okay. And in, in our AB 481 compliance, will it end up saying, referencing those training manuals? Like, for example, the SWAT training manual that you mentioned, will will that be detailed in our RAB 481 compliance? That we're going to do it in conformity with that, that training manual?
I don't believe so, because I think the manual side of it is mostly like an inventory, what we have, what we'd like to have, how we've used it. Because the other parts of the policy, like Policy 709 is part of an overall, the Mountain View Police Department policy. So the other parts, other chapters actually already have it covered in the use of force in the SWAT section.
Also, I would note to that, under the inventory section of the proposed policy, there is a legal and procedural, procedural rules section underneath each type of equipment. And there are cross-references to MVPD policies.
Okay, great. And will there be a link on the department's website where folks can access this information?
Yes, it's already been posted.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
So thank you, thank you to staff for this thorough report. It's a lot of information to digest, not in my field, but I, you know, usually I rely on our, our committees to do sort of the deep dive on things like this. So I was wondering, I know that the, our PSAB, the Public Safety Advisory Board, did a review of this policy, and I, I assume that, that you were a part of that. So I'm wondering what, whether you can give us a few more details other than what was in the staff report about the PSAB discussion and what they were most, what items they may have been most concerned about?
Sure. They received the same PowerPoint deck that you just saw, as well as the same staff report and policy. If I recall the discussion, one was clarification on what exactly a pistol, the difference between a pistol and a rifle. I provided that, and that in essence is range and accuracy. There was another question in terms of like mutual aid. If, if a neighboring agency like Sunnyvale has armored personnel carrier, what are the qualifications there? And the answer to that being that Sunnyvale, City of Sunnyvale has, their police department has presented that piece of equipment to their council already. But again, if we were to call upon them for help, the usage of it would have to go through our chain of command to allow for it. And if I recall, there was some comment on, it was more one of the commissioners highlighted, just kind of events around the country that in many cases, the police departments were outgunned and responding to these things because the, the types of weapons that criminals use. So that was more of a statement and, and support of just having the, the inventory. But all in all, I would say it was about a 10 to 15-minute presentation with questions. And I think there were two members of the public that called in.
Okay. And then I, I appreciate when I read this that this is going to come back to us every year because I really think it takes quite a bit of time to digest. And so I'm wondering, the top of page two of the staff report says every year, the city has to prepare a military equipment report, hold a community engagement meeting, and get the policy approved by a governing body. Can you outline how we're likely to do that? Will it involve the PSAB or a separate community meeting or both? Will it be a council item on the regular agenda or a consent calendar? How do you see us reviewing this every year?
The annual report will be published. And then within 30 days, the police department is required to hold the community engagement meeting, which we discussed, to allow for question and answers and discussion on the report and the policy. So that gives the 30-day period in advance to the council meeting where it would be introduced for renewal. There is no requirement that the report go before, the report and the policy go before PSAB. But the, there's, the community engagement meeting would be held by police department, and then it could go to council. It could potentially be a consent item if there were no changes to the policy or significant uses to report.
I would say. So the, the community I would say, so the, the community meeting would not necessarily be the PSAB. Those could be two separate meetings.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scholwalt here.
I was hoping you'd go into a little more detail about, for us, about what chemical munitions are and what explosive breaching equipment is. Cause I'm, I'm not really familiar with either of those, except what I see on TV shows. And I have a feeling that's very unrealistic.
Sure, happy to do so. So like with tear gas, it would be almost like a canister that you pull the pin on. And when you do, it lets off basically a lot of smoke. And within that smoke is the chemical, it's CN or CS gas. It's an irritant, so if it gets on your skin, your skin burns. If it gets in your airways, it makes you tear up. Makes it just very unpleasant, but it's not lethal. I mean hypothetically, if you were trapped in a room and it, it kind of displaced the oxygen, that's a concern and that's something we, we definitely take into account. But in the open air, it basically you can wash it off with water and that's that. And so in smaller quantities, if you imagine, if you've ever seen like a shotgun shell, they have little shotgun shells that have little projectiles that have a plastic capsule of the same chemical. And so one application we might use, but only by the SWAT team members would be if we knew a suspect was in the backside of a house and we wanted to move him or her to the front side. We would shoot into the room. Before we do that, we'd have to know who was in the room. We couldn't just blindly fire into the room. But that would explode in the little wall, a little puff would go out and that irritant would fill that room, right? And the thought there being you move people from one end of the house to the other. There's other, I think the second part of your question was explosive breach. So while on Hollywood type of movies, you see a gigantic mushroom cloud with a lot of flame, police department explosive breach programs are actually highly surgical and not as exciting. We use something called DECT cord. So if you imagine what a cable TV cable looks like, the explosive is contained within that cable. And it's a very mathematical formula of, that the breacher, and our department only has one breacher who's qualified to do these calculations. They have to go to a two week school. It's, it's quite, quite intense and quite mathematical. But they have to look at the material they're trying to get through the wall and calculate how much DECT cord to use and shape it in a form that would allow maybe a six foot police officer to fit through. And when we would use it, I'll give you an example of a use case is typically only in a hostage rescue situation. So in our experience, and these are based on case studies across the country, is when someone holds someone hostage, they generally barricade the doors or the windows or both. And so time is of the essence when you're trying to rescue someone. And so what the breacher would do with command authority from the tactical commander would be basically set up a charge on a wall that we know that we can get into the house quickly, not likely to be in the same room as the hostage or the suspect because there's a danger there and the, the initial explosion. But they would basically cut through the wall and get in. The other half of this is while all of that's going on, is extensive negotiations by our hostage negotiators. So our preference is if we have to sit there and talk for four, six, eight, 20 hours, we'll talk. But what would trigger the decision to use an explosive breach is suddenly the hostage negotiator telling us the suspect's unstable, he's made a threat to hurt or kill the hostage, or we believe he's actually moving towards the hostage to do so. Then the command authority would be given to do an immediate rescue. So it's mostly like a tool that's used on the side. And this is something that the, those that use it, the one person has to be certified every couple of years and it's dictated by the state.
And it says we've never done that?
Correct.
But you just, it's just a tool for your toolbox essentially is, 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 okay. And then the other thing with the chemical munitions, it, it says that you haven't used that in two decades. So that's, that's a long time. So you've been able to deal with all the problems that Mountain View has had and they've, they've been, you know, we haven't had as serious ones as some, some communities, but we have had, you know, our share. For, for, for 20 years, we haven't had to do that. We haven't had to do that. You, you've been able to find another way.
Right.
Okay. So I guess one of the things I wonder about with chemical munitions is, you know, how safe are they to store? I mean, what, what, what kind of handling situations do you have?
We have an armory that's, I think it's governed by State OSHA. It's, it's like a fireproof type of box. So everything that's in there, that's that type of munition is stored within there. There's fire department oversight of that because we're storing something that's, that could be explosive in nature. So that part has a lot of different safety protocols around it.
Okay. And then another thing I wanted to ask a little bit about is where do we get this equipment? I mean, I remember maybe five years ago, there was a big push to, for the federal government to supply outdated military equipment to police forces. And, and, but we've had many of these things long before that happened. So where do we get, where do we get this, this equipment?
There's a, there's a number of dealers and vendors will generally go out to state bid. So like ammunition or firearms, there's quite a few up and down the state that deal solely with law enforcement agencies. They don't just sell one thing, they'll sell the tear gas, they'll sell the bullets, they'll sell the rifles. They have to go through all the same federal firearm licensed protocols as if anyone was buying a weapon. So everything is serialized and completely, there's a lot of paperwork involved. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It was just that, you know, the, the, the title of this is military. And so I was, we're not necessarily getting this from the military. That's just the type of equipment. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's a good distinguish, something to distinguish because the military, the program you're talking about was known as the 1033 program, where the military would give free surplus weapons. In our entire inventory of roughly 90 something rifles, I believe five of them were provided free by the military. The rest were purchased prior to that, just using general, general city funds. They're almost identical. And again, this goes back to the very beginning of my presentation. How you use a weapon like this is very different. The what is the same, right? They're the same piece of equipment. But in the military, for example, if you say cover fire, they're basically spraying a lot of bullets down towards the enemy. Police departments operate entirely differently. We're accountable for every single bullet that's fired. So we cannot just indiscriminately fire weapons. Same weapon platform, different entirely, 180 degree different way to use it.
Okay. And then the other thing I, I, I was hoping we could talk a little bit more about is, is the use of drones. I really enjoyed seeing the demonstration of the drone at the, you know, at the PAL event on, on Friday. And I really think that, that these drones have a tremendous amount of utility throughout our city, not just for, not just for this. In fact, looking at the photo that's behind Megan, I think that was probably taken by a drone. You know, it's very nice photo. So anyway, can you talk a little bit about how, you know, how you, the police department own, you know, I asked that question. The police department owns the, the drones. And yet you lend them out for other departments' use or you help other departments with them? How, how does that work?
Sure, so this is actually outlined also in our drone use policy. But they're basically free to use by other city departments. So our, our most frequent customers, the Public Works Department, we're happy to fly the drones above all the city buildings. It saves someone from getting on a ladder or renting the equipment to get onto a roof where we can basically just hover over the parts that they want to look at. To my knowledge, they used it twice over the past couple of years. The city of Palo Alto next door, when they had a foot pursuit called for our help and we had one of our drone operators working and was able to fly up. Unfortunately, well, fortunately for them, they caught the person before we actually got up in the air. But in terms of the ways we use it internally is also, there was one case where we were trying to arrest a suspect known to carry weapons and the drone was hovering above his house first before we surrounded the house. And they actually saw the guy put the gun in a bag and throw it over the fence. And, you know, that's a danger to the public because if we didn't know about that and we weren't looking for it, then, you know, anyone, a child could come along and find a loaded gun. That gun in that case turned out to be a ghost gun. So there's a lot of usage and those that are on our drone team actually have to pass a little bit more stringent FAA requirements that allows them to fly in the way. So it's very strictly defined on when we can fly, how we can use it and when we can use it.
I think it might also come in handy for analyzing the canopy of the community. You know, you could literally measure the, the trees with photographs taken from drones. So I think there's, you know, there's a lot, a lot of utility for the drones. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? I did have a quick one and my apologies if I, if I misunderstood. So is there any legal prohibition against having the PSAB meeting serve as the, strikes me as, the PSAB is going to meet anyway. It will probably be a higher profile meeting, easier to publicize. Could a PSAB meeting fulfill the obligation under state law to have a community meeting?
The definition of the community engagement meeting in the statute is very specific and it says it should be held by a law enforcement agency. In this case, the, the city, that's the police department. So it, it being held by an advisory body just wouldn't meet that criteria.
Okay, that's helpful. Then seeing no other questions from the, oh, Councilmember Scholwalt here?
Could it be a joint meeting of the police department and the PSAB?
I think we could get creative about procedurally. I'm not sure how that would work, but I'm happy to discuss.
Thank you. I just brought that up because I think there's a general, you know, or I, I think the concept of, of involving the PSAB is, is really, is really sound. So like to see a way for that to be formalized.
Thank you. Then we will turn to the public. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. Let's go ahead and allocate two minutes. The first speaker is Tim McKenzie.
Hi all. At last month's PSAB meeting, in addition to military use policy, there was a presentation on the budget where we learned by MVPD's own numbers and admission that there are well over twice as many sworn officers as are needed, nearly three times as many as are needed for 24/7 coverage across the city. We furthermore learned that the distribution between sworn officers carrying weapons and community service officers is three to one. 75% are sworn officers and 25% are community services agents. I reject the notion that public safety looks like uniformed people walking around in our streets with military weapons. It doesn't seem appropriate to me. I think public safety looks more like being able to bike to work or school without fearing for one's life. I ask city council to reject the military use policy until such time as the percentage of sworn officers to community service agents, agencies within the police department has completely swapped so that we have three times as many community service agents than we do people with military weapons. I don't think it is appropriate for military weapons. And the fact that if this is rejected, may require a huge reworking of policies, isn't necessarily a bad thing. You may have remembered back in 2020, when police officers in Buffalo pushed an old man over and caused him to fall and hit the ground and bleed from the head and get brain damage. It was, just came out recently that it was decided that that was within the policy of, of the police department. Now, I'm not saying that that is the situation here, but just a reminder that just because things are within policy does not mean that they are necessarily a good policy. And I hope that this gets rejected until we swap sworn officers and community service agents.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Salim.
Hi, I'm Salim. I thought this was a really interesting agenda item. I did not know Mountain View Police Department had all these different, you know, categories of military equipment. I'm genuinely curious if anyone on city council knew that they had all these different types of equipment, chemical munitions, explosive breaching equipment, sniper rifles. I knew that they had drones because it came up two years ago at a council meeting, but I did not know they had like tear gas. And I think this speaks to a broader problem with policing. And that's that there basically isn't very much oversight. Local officials typically don't get into local government because they want to, you know, like look over what the police department is doing. A lot of local officials get involved because of land use or bike infrastructure. And so cities have been deferring a lot of these decisions to the, the police departments. And, you know, I, I think of course we should make decisions about when to have these kinds of equipment just in case. But we shouldn't make those decisions, like they should actually be decisions. The fact that we've just had this equipment for so long and like, I think most of us did not know that they had all these different types of military equipment is alarming, right? We haven't really been asking like, how common is it that there's a critical event in a city like Mountain View? How common is it that a police could, a police officer could mobilize that event and then use a sniper rifle to end that critical event? I, I don't think we know. I also don't think we know if our public safety dollars would be better spent protecting children biking to school, right? We, we could spend this money differently for public safety. I, I'm open minded to what those decisions end up being, but I just don't think we've even had these decisions as a city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kevin Ma.
Evening again, council. My name is Kevin Ma, resident in the San Antonio neighborhood. I would, I understand that there is a list of items that the police have, as well as a list of general items that was specified specifically by the assembly bill, that I would perhaps, would like to see a policy that would exclude some of the items that we don't currently have. Like, I don't really see a case in the future where Mountain View Police Department needs autocannons or giant Taser shockwave machine or explosive projectiles or a weaponized aircraft or a Humvee anytime soon. But this policy as it stands still leaves that open because it's not a ban. It just says that we have a process to collect them in the future. But I think it'll be more, I would be more confident in the city if we just get those off the table in the first place rather than needing to just come back in the future. I do, I, I knew the staff report that says that there are various of these items that basically haven't been used, right? Chemical munitions, never been used. Sniper rifles, the last one was used was for a person who barricaded themselves in a building, which I, as an outsider, would say that's a waited out game, but obviously I was not in the situation, so I can't fully say that. Explosive breaching equipment that has never been used. I understand that police are imagined to be prepared for risk scenarios, but that is kind of a maintenance cost, not necessarily financial, just someone has to do that stuff that perhaps focuses the police resources on situations that bluntly just never happen. Whereas the things that do happen, stolen bikes, theft, don't really get addressed with any of these flashy equipment. So yeah, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alex Brown.
Hey Chris. As a participant in MVPDX, I just want to say I feel cheated that I was not invited to either play with the drones or the DECT cord. I feel like if I, if I'm supposed to get a picture of what MVPD is and can do, that I want the full breadth of it and I want to be able to breach a, a wall using DECT cord. That sounds like fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, I will now bring the item back for council deliberation and action. And note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the ordinance attached to the report. Any comments? Or if not, a motion is in order. Councilmember Mattiecheck.
Thank you. So I appreciate the police department and the legal department putting this together. While I was aware of some of these items, I wasn't aware of all of them. But I think the key takeaway for me is these items are not used very frequently and they are used for very specific narrowly defined circumstances. And so it's not like they are used every day. They're there just in case. And I appreciate the PSAB taking a look at this and asking questions. I actually watched that PSAB meeting and I thought they had good questions. And I'm prepared to support this. I'm very comfortable with it. I only see one other hand up. So I'm happy to make a motion or I can wait. Make a motion? I'll move the staff recommendation, which is to introduce an ordinance of the city of Mountain View, adding section 2.69.3 entitled Military Equipment Policy to the Mountain View City Code in compliance with Assembly Bill 481 to be read in title only for the reading waived and to set a second reading from May 10th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Shovel.
Well, I'm prepared to second it, but I, I would wonder, I'm, I'm liking asking, is there some way that we can include the, or is it included? The reference by the, I mean, the review by the PSAB every year? Is that included in this ordinance? I, I'm unclear after I listened to the discussion and whether it's included or was just a possibility because it, I, I, that's something I think would be good to assign to them is review of this. Is that included?
It is not currently included.
Well, council member Matta check, could we add PSAB would, would review this report as part of this procedure? Are you happy with that?
So I guess I would like to understand, do we also then have to have a separate meeting that's held by the police department? Which means it would be reviewed or we'd have three separate times? PSAB, police department, city council? Or could we combine any of those? I don't have any problems with the PSAB, you know, reviewing it. I just, I'm worried about the number of meetings.
Yeah, I'm a little worried about that too, which is why I asked the question about could they conceivably have a joint meeting? But at the same time, I feel like we have just founded this public safety advisory board and their, and their job is really to help us with oversight of the police and understand what our police does in our community. And it seems like this is a, you know, this is a job that's really appropriate for them. So I, I would really like them to be involved.
Yeah, I'm fine. It, it wouldn't be part of the ordinance, but it would just be a separate item saying that we would like to have the PSAB involved. I would say I'd like to have the PSAB and the police department have a joint meeting if we can find a way to do that. And then it also comes to council, so I'm happy to include that. Part of the ordinance because I don't want to change the ordinance.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
Thanks for the confirmation. Any other comments? Council member Lieber.
Question. If, if additional weapons or tools or vehicles or anything are, are added during the year, would that, would the public be able to know about that at the time of the budget adoption?
Council member Lieber, can you repeat the question?
So I'm very pleased to see that we don't have any category 13 weapons right now. How would council and the public know if there was a, a plan to add those?
Okay, thank you for repeating that, council member Lieber. So if the police department is required under this new law and ordinance to bring forward any new purchases, it would have to come to council. So it would depend on the timing of that, so it could potentially be in the budget, but under this law, I would imagine that we would have to bring a separate item to council to approve it specifically if it falls under that list of all those items, but I would ask the city attorney to confirm that.
Right, so under our inventory is attached to policy, so we're confined to the categories currently in possession by the police department. So you couldn't add, for example, category 13, if that's the one you referenced, without an amendment to the current policy.
So I don't want to introduce category 13 weapons into our city. So I'm fine with it not being part of the policy. I just want to find out how council and the public could know if the inventory was enlarged in terms of the types of the categories.
The policy would have to be submitted for approval with an, with an amendment adding those categories. So the public would be, it would be happening in a public meeting.
And if I may, mayor, if I can just jump in on the category 13 topic. Looking at those items in there, there's nothing philosophically I would be in support of, of bringing that to our city.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ha.
So I'll be brief. I, I will be supporting the motion. I think the most important, one of the more important things about this is that it's a process. It's a, a lot to digest all in one reading and I, I certainly wouldn't want to be thrown hands out right and left on the dice right now. But I think this is a process and I appreciate that council member Matta check and, and show were added the PSAB going over this as well, because I think that's one of the reasons that we formed the, the PSAB. So I'm, I'm happy that we're passing this and that we're, that we'll have annual review by the community, the PSAB and council. That feels appropriate to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. City attorney, do you want to weigh in?
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification with regard to the PSAB meeting and then the community meeting that is to be held by the law enforcement agency. We're definitely going to look into combining that meeting into one meeting. I, I will point out that the AB 41 is new and I'm sure that there will be some later clarification regarding that because there are many cities that have advisory bodies like PSAB that should weigh in on, in on items like this. So we will work to combine that requirement into one meeting. So there's only that meeting and then city council.
Thank you for the clarification. Council member Sholwaltzer, just to be clear, the motion on the floor is the staff recommendation plus a request for staff to evaluate the feasibility of combining the required community meeting with a regularly scheduled PSAB meeting. That a fair assessment?
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant. And I, I just to restate, I really think it's important to, as we found this, I mean, it's only been going for years. We found this advisory board that they have important and appropriate work to do. I think this, this definitely falls into that category.
Thank you. And my apologies, council member Matta check actually made the motion. Go ahead, council member.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify why I think it's a good idea to have a combined meeting. Not just the fact that it's fewer meetings, but the PSAB is an established board. And so I think people are more apt to take notice of their meetings than they would a completely separate meeting. And there might be greater attendance at that because it is an established board. So that's, in addition to fewer meetings, I think it's important that they be combined because it's an existing forum. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Matta check, seconded by council member Sholwaltzer. Were there any other questions or comments? Staff, is the motion clear? If it is, then we'll go ahead and proceed with a roll call vote.
Council member Matta check?
Yes.
Council member Sholwaltzer?
Yes.
Councilman Brabbe Koga?
Aye.
Council member Lieber?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Motion carries on honestly.
Thank you very much. Thank you, chief and Ms. Maravich for the presentation and for joining us. We will now move on to item seven, council staff committee reports. Are there any? You don't have to be. Council member Lieber.
Thank you, mayor. Well, I, I noticed that Mr. Tim McKenzie referenced the Muakma. And there's actually an event coming up on the 30th at Santa Clara University. That's going to be a day-long cultural event with the Muakma tribe. And the URL for it is muakma.org. And I think that that should be quite interesting for people from our area. Also, I wanted to report on the Bay Restoration Authority that we will have a tribal engagement policy coming forward in October. And we're hoping to spread it to other jurisdictions as well. So more, more to be coming on that as, as things develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Abi Koga.
Thanks, mayor. Sorry. I had a couple of items to report out on. So on Saturday, Silicon Valley Clean Energy celebrated their fifth anniversary. And I was gonna ask to show the video. There's a nice video that staff put together, but it is five minutes long. So I think I'll just send it to all of you and probably will post it on my Facebook site too. But a lot has been accomplished in five years and we have a lot to be proud of as one of the founding for agencies of SVCE. At the Air District, we have the retire, we had the retirement of our APCO, which is the Air Pollution Control Officer, basically our head person, Jack Broadbent. And we are in, to begin, about to begin our search for our new APCO. We also passed new SEQA thresholds for evaluating significance of climate impacts from land use projects and plans. So what does that mean? It's mostly advisory, but this is basically giving some guidelines on, you know, what would be acceptable ways of reducing GHG emissions. So some of the suggested guidelines include things like, this is all land use and building, no gas appliances, reduction of EMT, EV charging stations. So a lot of the work that the cities have already been doing have now been incorporated into these new SEQA threshold guidelines. So that, that was, I think, a major achievement to, to have that move up to the Air District level. VTA, we had a workshop on Friday where we went through the finance assessment that's being conducted, a report on that that kind of gave us like a 10-year projection of VTA finances as well as VTA forward. This is a plan to strengthen and prepare the VTA workforce for challenges ahead. So as you know, we have a new general manager and with her, staff has engaged in this plan to try to, one, just recover from COVID. But looking forward, looking for ways to improve, hopefully improve the workforce and improve, improve service for our writers. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Matta check.
Thank you. So we covered a lot of topics at our retreat on Saturday. One of the ones that we didn't get to, that I was hoping we would, is to talk a little bit about what is required to be disclosed, so to speak, under the council staff committee reports, which is typically item eight. And it's interesting, I went and read the policy and it is different than what I was told when I was first elected. And I was told we had to, for example, disclose when we did something that required city funds to be spent, like attending a conference. And that's not in the policy. So I was wondering if my colleagues would refer this item to the CPPC to take a look at this so that we're clear on what we do need to disclose and maybe some guidelines around that area, since it's different than what I expected to see.
Council member Sholwaltzer, did you want to respond to the request or is this on a different matter? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, council member around check, I'm really glad that you brought that up because not only do, I think it's important to look at what we, what we need to report, but I also think that we go to a lot of regional meetings and we learn a lot personally when we go to them, but I don't think we do a very good job of sharing it with one another. And I would like to talk about, and, and normally, I mean, this is early. It's only eight o'clock, so we're relatively fresh. But, but oftentimes when we get to this point in the meeting, it's like at 11 or 12 o'clock or one in the morning and we're exhausted and nobody wants to listen to, you know, these reports. So, so I, I think they kind of fall on deaf ears and they, they don't have the impact that, that they should have. So I would also like the, this analysis to consider other ways to us, for us to communicate that information, either by just sharing emails with everybody, which we have gotten legal advice over years is either I, I've gotten legal advice some of the time I was on council, but that was acceptable to send something to the whole council. And then I've gotten legal advice more recently that it was not acceptable. So I would like to know, you know, if I want to write up a little report about one, something that's happened at a regional meeting, can I just share it with my council members? So I would like all of those things to be considered in this. I think that there's, you know, definitely room for improvement. So thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you. I guess by show of hands, the council comfortable with referring, I don't, council member Matta check, off the top of your head, do you know which policy it is? Of the numbers?
Part of A13.
A13, okay. So the request is to refer, I guess, a review of A13 to the CPPC. All in favor?
So it's just a part of it. There's a lot in A13.
So this specific component related to report backs as part of the council staff committee reports. Okay, there is, or it looks like unanimous support. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other reports? Comments, questions? If not, then we will proceed to the most exciting part of the agenda, the closed session report. City Attorney Logue, do you have a closed session report?
Um, no, there are no, there was no action in close session to report today.
Okay, fantastic. And we'll move on to adjournment. Thank you so much for joining us. Our next council meeting will be held on May 10th, 2022. Until then, stay healthy. The meeting is adjourned at 8:08 PM. Good night, everyone.